Good evening. This meeting will come to order. This is the August 2016 Zoning Board of Appeals. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Eggleson and Ms. Veronte have advised that they will not be attending tonight. Mr. Tizola?
Here.
Mr. Haberman?
Here.
Mr. Sota?
Here.
Mr. Vassino?
Here.
Mr. DuBois?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
Please, yeah, I got it now. If you feel anyone on this board might be a conflict of interest to your application, please let us know. Before we get started, item number seven, is Mr. Searle here? Number 20 Wilson Street? Okay. Okay, all right then. Item number one. Okay.
Item number one, 30 Wildwood Avenue, Zone R5. Kevin Kaseden, Esquire for Kenneth Lozinski, owner, on remand from court, re-here. Section C6-4-2, lot merger appeal, map 12, block 1, 23, parcel 10.
Mr. Kaseden, you're up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kevin Kaseden, Carol Kaseden and more, 26 Cherry Street here in Milford. I didn't know in conversations with Stephen if you had a presentation in mind or the history or whether you would want me to explain it.
I prepared for the board a summary of the long history of this parcel. Would you like a copy?
Sure. Essentially, there was a, the board had made a decision that the lot had merged, I think it was in 2014, it was based on an original decision by Linda Stock. We had come to the board for a reconsideration at one point or with actually additional, we consider it to be additional evidence. The board, at the time, and there's a memorandum of decision which I'm sure is in the file and maybe Stephen's memo addresses it, it focuses on, the judge had written in this decision that the board had focused on the fact that the decision had been made versus the idea that there was additional evidence and the additional evidence was a presentation that what was shown in the original application was a pool and was an inflatable pool by Linda Stock's own admission. What we came to found out after the fact in looking at the overhead photograph and my conversations with Ken Lozinski, my client who's here tonight, was he had rented that property out and that was actually a trampoline that had crossed the property lines. But when you looked at it from the overhead photo, it looked like a pool that had been covered up for the winter. So, the judge made the decision essentially to remand it back to the board, for the board to make a decision based on the new evidence and whether either an inflatable pool or a trampoline actually merges property under Milford zoning regulations. Following that decision, I honestly declared victory and went home, basically. And I went back to, yay, you know, Ken, we got this lot approved for you. We went and saw Stephen Harris and Stephen certified the lot under 642. We posted notice in the newspaper that 642 and nobody appealed that decision and so now we have a situation where it's 642 certified by the zoning enforcement officer but we missed that step to come back to the board. If you look at the, really the last page of the judge's decision, he really kind of highlights what his, kind of highlights what his feelings are on it, Judge Berger at the Land Use Court in Hartford, that, you know, I'm going to remand it to the board to basically, for them to, ordering them to look at this evidence that was presented at that hearing and then they can determine, once again, whether an inflatable pool or a trampoline acts to merge properties versus what's been the longstanding, you know, law in Milford, especially under the 642, is there's a foundation or there's a driveway or there's some other type of structure or use. Part of the other evidence was there was an affidavit from the tenants saying it was an inflatable pool and that it was actually up for, I don't remember off the top of my head, is somewhere between 24 and 72 hours. Ken actually found out about it from speaking with Linda Stock and he immediately drove over there and said, "Get that off the other property, I don't want any issues with it." So, we're here tonight to, on the remand from Judge Berger of that decision.
Mr. Kaseden. On the 642, September 21, 2012, I guess the placard was posted and no one had appealed it within the 15 days, so from that point on, we had just assumed everything was in place. Is that correct?
The, from the original or from the time that there was a?
From the very last, from the last hearing.
From the very last hearing after the 642 placard was posted, nobody appealed, correct?
From that point on, it was thought that it was over and it was not an issue any longer?
Yes.
I guess one of the things, you know, we've been back and forth with this quite a few times. It's been a pool. Was it ever stated it was a trampoline because it's like we're looking for proof of that?
Yes, it's in the record from that hearing. There's actually a color photograph and probably in the minutes with me raising that issue stating that it's a trampoline. And I presented the evidence that it was in, the affidavit from the neighbors that it was an inflatable pool and there was testimony from Mr. Lozinski and his wife that it was an inflatable pool and they had immediately asked the neighbors to remove it. The neighbors didn't have any authorization to put the pool up in the first place under the rental or lease agreement. And then it also, you know, merger is really a question of intent, you know, and the 642 tries to formulate or codify intent and by giving you some examples. And one of the positions we made at that earlier, statements we made at the earlier hearing was that the neighbors cannot have the intent to merge property that doesn't belong to them. So as they were renting the house, they, in using that back or side yard, they didn't have the proper intent. It was never Mr. Lozinski's intent to merge the properties. But all of that evidence is already part of the record. We don't have any new evidence to present as part of that.
Any questions for Mr. Kaseden? Anyone else speaking on 30 Wildwood Avenue?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Stephen Harris, I am the City of Milford's CEO. You were mailed a packet, a rather lengthy packet about this. There was like a two-page summary that outlined all of the events as they happened in chronological order and all the associated documents that went along with it, but I'll just stick to the highlights. If you flip about halfway through your packet, you will see a photocopy of what was purported to be a pool but is in reality a trampoline and you can see the netting, the shadow of the netting around the pool and I can bring this forward and show it to you rather than And secondly, towards the very rear of your packet, you will see a cell sheet from Cabela's. It's several pages long and it clearly shows a blow-up pool and I'll show that to you now. So, in conclusion, it's my opinion, this is as current CEO, since this case started long before I got here, 2006 or something like that, it's my opinion that all of the former opinions by other CEOs who, including myself shortly after I got here, that the lot is merged are in error, including my decision that the lot was merged. That is also in error. With the issuance of the 642, I believe the city may be stopped from ruling against the homeowner, but that's just my personal opinion as CEO, I'm not a lawyer. So, in closing, I would urge you to declare that the lot is not merged and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
One of the questions is, of course, you're convinced that that was a trampoline?
Yes, I am.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Sota.
Mr. Harris, just from my own information, if this inflatable pool was there, are you telling me this would merge the lot if they had this on the other side?
No, it would not merge the lot because that is not a permanent structure.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Anyone else speaking on 30 Wildwood? Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, this hearing is closed. Discussion? Are you convinced now that it was a trampoline? It's as simple as that, so?
Even if it wasn't and it was the pool, it's still not, it's still not merged.
We need a motion.
I make a motion to, how do we word this?
This is not, this is not overturning an appeal, so?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, your choices are under the law, since this is an appeal, you can either vote to affirm my decision, overturn my decision, or modify my decision.
Affirm your current position, right? The one you just stated today?
No, the, my previous position was to declare the lots merged. That decision you can affirm or overturn or modify.
Okay, so just to get this straight, we want to overturn your decision, correct?
Well, since I'm already on the record, that's what I asked you to do. I would make a motion to overturn the CEO's decision on 30 Wildwood.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second on the motion. Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, neglected to, to, we're short one permanent member this evening, so Mr. Thomas, you'll be part of this hearing, so your vote, please.
With the motion.
I'm with the motions. Finally settled.
Item number two, 226 Second Avenue, R10, Thomas Lynch, Esquire for Robert Dowling, owner of 227 Second Avenue, reference property, Ted Kralowski, Section 9-2-1, appealed the decision of a zoning enforcement officer regarding permit issued at 226 Second Avenue. Scope of work does not comply with Section 6.2.3, map six, block 82, parcel two.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Thomas Lynch. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lynch, Trembickian Boynton and my office is located here in Milford at 63 Cherry Street. And I'm here tonight with my client, Robert Dowling, who is seated in the front row with me. Mr. Dowling is the owner of property at 227 Second Avenue, which is adjacent to the property at 226 Second Avenue, which is the subject of this appeal. And we're before you tonight, appealing the decision of the zoning office, the zoning permit in question was actually signed by Joseph Griffith. I assume that either Mr. Griffith or Mr. Harris had discussions about this prior to the permit being issued, so I'm not going to refer to either of them. Personally, I'm going to just merely state that we're appealing the decision of the zoning enforcement officer or zoning enforcement official for the issuance of the permit in question. So just at the outset, I've given to you a handout of exhibits that I'm going to be making reference to during the course of my presentation to you. And I also want to make note for the record that we submit that this appeal was filed timely. You're all aware under our regulations that a decision of the zoning enforcement officer must be filed within 15 days of the officer's decision or, as Connecticut case law prescribes, within constructive notice of my client receiving notice of the decision. So I submit to you that my client filed the application in a timely manner within 15 days after he received notice that his next-door neighbor was commencing work under the permit that was issued on June 2 of this year. So that's just a procedural point that I wanted to make right at the outset. So a little bit of background and I'm going to ask you to also refer to the vision appraisal information that's noted as item number four in my handout to you. 226 Second Avenue is a house that's located at the corner of Seaview Avenue and Second Avenue. It was actually the subject of applications brought to you last month by the current owner, Mr. Kralowski, for decks to the rear of the property. And if you recall, Board Member Sota specifically questioned the work that was going on on the front of the property and that's why I'm here tonight, because my client not only questions that work, he claims that that work was done illegally and is being done illegally and that a variance should have been required prior to the issuance of a permit for that work. Referring to the vision appraisal information, the house was built roughly in the early 1900s. It consists of some 200, 2,283 square feet. Prior to the addition work that's being done now, consisted of four bedrooms. And I will also direct your attention to the second page of the vision appraisal printout to show that it's shown not only in your zoning file, which you have here tonight and if need be, we can get exhibits that are contained in that file, but also the vision appraisal records reflect the assessor's records, that this is a two-family house. This is a legal, non-conforming, two-family house in a single-family zone. It's an R10 zone. So that clearly the maintenance of that two-family use, we're not contesting, but what we will be contesting during the course of this presentation to you and the evidence that we're going to submit to you is that this was an illegal expansion, an expansion under 64 of our zoning regulations of a non-conforming use and that is not permitted. So, as I made reference to last month, Mr. Kralowski came for variances for the rear deck. The project, and I have on my placard here and I assume that Meg has supplied you all with a copy of the map that was presented at last month's meeting, it shows the work that's being done on the front of the property and I specifically referenced the work being done on the side of the property facing Second Avenue. Now this property is located at the intersection of those two streets, Second Avenue and Seaview Avenue, and as we all know, under our zoning regulations, you're required to hold a front yard setback off of each street. The front yard setback that's required in the R10 zone is 25 feet. And if you note on the map and as Mr. Sota brought up at the last meeting, the addition that's being constructed there, okay, it's not a projection. Formerly, there was a projection there, but the addition that's being constructed there, it's an entryway, it's an elevator, and it's a foyer to the new house, that has a setback of 20 feet 6 inches. And it's shown on the map and it's also referred to on the map as an addition. And when Bill brought the point up at the last meeting, he asked as to why a variance was not needed, Steve responded and he referred the board to Section 411 of the zoning regulations. Well, I have a copy of Section 411 included in my packet to you, so let's see what that says. 414 says that as it relates to projections into required yards, "The space in any required yard shall be kept open and unobstructed except for the ordinary projection of open entries, steps, decks, stoops, or porches, candeliver roofs, eaves, et cetera, provided that such features shall not project more than four feet into any required yard nor more than a distance equal to 20 percent of the required yard." What Stephen specifically referred you to was Section 4.1.4.2. Porches, which do not meet the required setbacks in which appear on the 1948 assessor's cards, shall be allowed to be enclosed, provided they are not extended farther into any required yard. Well, Mr. Kralowski's own architect didn't refer to the structure that was there as a porch, he referred to it as a deck. And I submit to you, the first two pictures that I handed out were pictures that were in the zoning file, I got a copy of them made, Meg gave me a copy, we took them to a photography store and had them glossed. I assume that the determination was made, that the structure that was on this house, okay, that fit the statue or fit the standards of 414, was the deck or porch or whatever you want to call it that's shown on this first picture that I handed out to you, the one with the colored brown roof. The second picture that I handed to you is this one. This is the picture from the Zillow real estate ad when Mr. Kralowski purchased the property last year. It doesn't take a trained eye to look at these two decks and see that they're not the same. And there's no evidence in the zoning file to show that what this deck is, that's on the Zillow ad when Mr. Kralowski bought the house last year, was completed prior to 1948 or after 1948. And I think that that's a very important fact because the reliance was made on issuing this permit that there was a porch on the front of this house. Zoning regulation says that you can enclose a porch. Zoning regulation does not say that you can knock the porch down even when your architect calls it a deck and build a two-story addition on it. It becomes part of the main structure of the house. It's not a projection anymore. I mean, it's, it's not brain surgery. I mean, it's, to me, straightforward. The second argument that we're making to you is that this is an expansion of a non-conforming use. I made a copy of Section 6.2 of our zoning regulations, included that in my handout. "No non-conforming use of land shall be enlarged, extended, or altered, and no structure, no structure or part thereof devoted to a non-conforming use shall be enlarged, extended, constructed, reconstructed, or structurally altered except in changing the use to one which is allowable in the zoning district in which the use is located, except in the case of single-family homes." This is a two-family house. "No non-conforming use of a structure shall be extended to occupy land outside the structure or space in another structure." Now, we ran into this in our argument back in May when we had the appeal of Mr. Griffith's issuance of the permit on Silver Street. And this is the same situation as it relates to the expansion of the use. And I attached, for your reference, again, a copy of the case from 2003 cited in Volume 75 of the Connecticut appellate reports at page 796, "The Case of Monroe Versus the Town of Branford." And I, again, direct your attention, and it's at the end of the handout that I've given to you, I direct your attention to the language that the judge used in her decision. I believe this was Judge Dupont who issued this decision, yes. Antoinette Dupont issued the decision and if you go to the second to the last, third to the last page of the decision, she states, "Nonconformities prevent uniformity with surrounding areas and can affect the value of neighboring property." A vertical extension of a building, here, by adding a second story can change and affect the amount of air or light between buildings and may detract from the aesthetic value of a neighborhood. "The addition of a second story is not a negligible or cosmetic change from the original nature of the nonconformity. The bulk of the building has been increased in quantity and dimension thereby intensifying the nonconformity. The second story provides a significant additional amount of enclosed space within the confines of the nonconforming footprint, causing a substantial increase in the nonconformity." Now, we've run into this hundreds of times and I explain to clients all the time when they come in to see me, when they want to fight somebody who wants to build a larger house near the shoreline, and I tell them, "There's no God-given right to a water view." And there isn't. But that's not the case here. My client, as you can see from the pictures that we've handed out to you, and I assume you've passed them along, you've all seen them, you see the projection that this puts into the front yard, you see how it affects my client's view of the water. And he has a right to expect that the zoning regulations are going to be complied with and adhered to. And this has a very substantial effect on his use of his property, his enjoyment of his property, and the value of his property. So, with all those arguments that I've given to you, I'm happy to answer any questions. I've given you the exhibits. We ask that you overturn the zoning official's decision to issue this permit and require Mr. Kralowski to come before you for variances. Thank you.
Any questions for Attorney Lynch? No? Anyone else speaking?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I am Stephen Harris, Milford's zoning enforcement officer. There's a few points I'd like to make here. First of all, all of the new construction to the house is being, is confined to the building footprint. The regulations, Section 4142, allows porches existing as of 1948 to be enclosed. And part of enclosing, if I have, if I have a porch and I want to enclose it, simple fact of construction means I got to take it down and build something in its same location, which is what we see here. So, at this address, the new elevator tower does not encroach beyond the confines of the existing porch. the existing porch. Another point I'd like to make is that on Sixth Silver Street, just a few months ago, this very board permitted a vertical expansion of a nonconforming structure and a nonconforming Lastly, there's some back and forth about what's a deck and what's a porch. I would argue that a deck in the front yard is called a porch, and a porch in the backyard is called a deck. Decks and porches are synonyms. They're different words for the exact same thing. So, I have some very old postcards of this property dating long before 1948 I'd like to show you. So, these eight photographs, basically, they're showing the intersection of Seaview Avenue and Second Avenue, and different images of the different houses, including number 226, which you can see on this old green and black and white, especially here. There's 226, and you can see the first floor and second floor porches. So, I am convinced that these, just to wrap around, first and second floor porches, were there long before 1948, therefore, via Section 4.1.4.2, they can be enclosed. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Sota.
Mr. Harris, the way I kind of see the regulation is a porch is a structure with a roof above it. Like, if that, so I would consider, okay, I'd give you the first floor is a porch, but where the second floor doesn't have a roof, I would consider that a second-floor deck. I mean, that's just how-
The regulation expressly says open porches.
Well, yeah, an open porch, but it has a roof over it, and that's open sides with the roof on it. If it doesn't have the roof on it, it's a deck. I mean, I've been in construction 30 years, that's how we always go by it, you know what I mean?
But, you know, I respect your opinion, but from sort of a layman's-
That's why I questioned this last month.
-point of view, from sort of everyday usage, without, you know, trying not to split hairs, a deck and a porch, they're the same thing. They're synonyms.
Well, what I'm getting at is, if this had a second-floor deck on, then I could see closing it in. If this second-floor deck had a roof over it, then I could see, I'd give it to you and say, "Yeah, you could close it in." But because there's no roof on it, you know, what are you closing in? You're building the roof.
Well, my argument is that a deck and a porch are two words for the same thing.
Mr. Harris, the fact that they are, this addition that they're putting in place of the porch that was there is for a different use? That there's going to be an elevator in there, or whatever, that doesn't matter?
Well, the regulation just says that it can be enclosed, and the board, just a couple of months ago, permitted a vertical expansion of both a nonconforming structure and a nonconforming use, which informed my opinion.
Go ahead, Mr. Sota.
What about the elevator shaft going above the second-floor roof?
That's a vertical expansion.
So, that's allowed?
Well, if a porch is allowed to be enclosed, then, and if the board is going to permit a vertical expansion, as they did on Sixth Silver, that was informing my opinion. So, if you can enclose the porch with a room, you can vertically expand it, because if you can do one, you can do the other.
Right. I understand that. I know what you're saying about Silver Street, but I didn't vote for Silver Street, but it didn't pass anyway, so.
Well, the board collectively, not-
Then, this is all within the footprint. There's, it's not at all outside of it.
Yeah, there are interior renovations, but that don't matter, that don't concern the board. And there's some new dormers that are going, being constructed as well, but those are all within the building footprint.
Any other questions for Mr. Harris? Mr. Lynch, would you like to speak?
First of all, I referred to Sixth Silver, but that was a different, that was a second-floor going on a primary structure. We're putting a second floor, we're taking down a projection, and, again, I'm not making this stuff up. The architect, reading right from his plan, says, "Proposed two-story addition," and where he shows the existing structure, he calls it "existing upper and lower decks." He doesn't call them porches, he calls them decks. And he's turning decks into an addition of the house. That's totally different than Silver Street. Silver Street, they just put a second floor, a floor, second floor on an existing house. They weren't building over a projection. Totally different. And, again, with all due respect to Stephen, the pictures that I gave to you at the outset showing the 1920 picture of the house, and then the one from Vision Appraisal a year ago, okay, two totally different decks. You know, one of them has ballisters, the other one clearly has its pressure-treated wood. So, the burden of proof, if somebody wants to take advantage of a zoning regulation that says, "Okay, if you have a, if you have a deck or a porch that you want to enclose from, you got to show that it was there in 1948." I don't believe that, in this case, the owner of the property bore the burden of the proof. I mean, Stephen submitted to you the same pictures that I did from, some postcards from the '20s. I get it, but that structure that's there, or whatever the structure that was there when Mr. Kralikowski bought the house wasn't the same as it was in 1948. It could very well have been taken down and then rebuilt. There could have been a 10-year gap. He could have abandoned that structure, and now he wants to use a deck and enclose it as his primary residence? I don't think, it doesn't pass the smell test. Sorry.
Any questions? No?
Good evening. I'm the owner of 226. I am building out my porch-
Excuse me, can you give us your name, please? Name and address?
Ted Kralikowski, 226, Second Avenue. I'm building out my existing porch no further than my next-door neighbors have. It may be eight inches in difference. I am legally handicapped, totally disabled. I am parked in handicap parking now, outside. I need that elevator. It's not that I want to have an elevator, I need it. I'm a third-generation homeowner in Milford. I've spent all 59 years right within the same eight streets that I live now. That house has always looked the same. It's never changed, and if you look at the 1993 building permit application, that's on file at P&amp;Z, it states first and second-floor porch rebuild. It's been existing there since 1906. I don't think they had decks in 1906, or that term was even coined. This is a post-Victorian wraparound porch. The first floor is covered by the floor of the second-floor deck, and I need that space to go up with my elevator, and there's an exemption for height as well. I'm not even building out on the full amount of my porch. I need to move the mechanics out of the basement to conform with FEMA, and I need wheelchair access to get into my vestibule, so I could get into my elevator, if need be, later down the road. I'm anticipating the worst. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, this hearing's closed. Okay, so you have some new information from this gentleman as to why it's enclosed, but...
I think one of the key points for me is the fact that the structure's not going outside of the original boundary of the porch. It's not encroaching anymore. So, you know, that's just ringing home with me that it's not increasing the nonconformity.
Any other comments?
My concern was the different use. It wasn't, it's not being used for a porch anymore, it's being used for something different. I mean, that was explained to by the owner. That was my concern.
Mr. Sota.
Well, I mean, I feel for his hardship and all that, but the hardship goes with the land, not the individual, and I have a problem with this one, because, you know, you are creating quite a bit of an expansion from what you had there, from the porches or the decks, whatever you want to call them. And because the second floor didn't have a roof over it, you know, I could see, okay, give him the first floor, and maybe he could, you know, it's a two-family house, maybe he could live on the first floor. I don't know, you know, the, his circumstances there, but you could also, you can also put an elevator shaft inside the house. It's actually cheaper to do that than put it, put it outside. It's a lot less to construct.
I didn't have an issue with the height. That was, again, resolved, because the zoning board, the zoning office took care of that issue with their interpretation of 642, I think it is, or 624. So, and we made a statement about that, I know you didn't, but we, the rest, I know I did the last hearing. My issue had to do with the use, whether, you know, it was a porch, you know, it's something else, you know? But again, it's not going outside of the existing footprint, so.
Any other comments? Are we ready for a motion? You want to think about this, or you ready to make a decision? Do you have any thoughts there? Mr. Sota? Did you have something additional to add?
In light of the gentleman who lives there, and the information he just brought to us, it kind of changes the picture of it a little bit, so I don't know if you want to think about this. We don't have to make a decision right now. We can, we have 65 days from this hearing. So, if you think you're ready, or you're not ready, it's up to you. It's not a matter of any more information even coming to us, it's a matter of digesting what we have.
Make a motion to uphold the decision of the zoning enforcement officer?
Second the motion. We have a motion to uphold the decision of the zoning officer. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Thomas?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
Against the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
I'm with the motion.
I'm with the motion. Okay, let's see if we can move up to number seven. Item number seven on our agenda, 20 Wilson Street. Are you here? You are. We have a couple of lengthy hearings, and yours is kind of short, so we'll let you go next, if you would like.
I was watching a TV, and I dropped right away.
Okay. You need a better reason than that.
I live about two blocks away.
Go ahead. We don't anticipate you being very long. We have to read it in first. Go ahead, Mr. Secretary.
Item number seven, 20 Wilson Street, Zone R-10, Stanley Sorrell, owner, Section 3-1-4, very east-side yard to 9.01, where 10 feet required for addition, map 64, block 930, parcel 17.
Go ahead. Your name, please, and your address.
I'm Christine Sorrell, 20 Wilson Street, Milford. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members and staff. My husband and I are lifelong residents of Milford. We're looking to appeal Section 3.1.14 for a variance on the east side of our yard from 10 feet to 9 feet, for an addition to our residence. The addition would allow for a bedroom for my mother, who is 68 years young, and has agreed to come live with us to assist us in caring with our special needs children. There would also allow for a laundry room, coatroom, broom, storage area, and a playroom for our children. We have four special needs children, three of them adopted from foster care, and another teenager who chooses not to be adopted at this time. The 23 and 19-year-old no longer live with us. Our other children, biological siblings aged six and eight, would be utilizing the My eight-year-old daughter has numerous early life experiences due to abuse and neglect she's experienced prior to her adoption. We've had two complete psychological evaluations, she's had private therapy, cognitive behavioral therapy, sensory therapy. She has numerous diagnoses: attention deficit disorder, sensory processing disorder, obsessive-compulsive disorder, reactive attachment disorder, and Tourette's syndrome. She has a 504 plan at school that assists with math and homework. She has special reading groups, social-emotional playgroups. Our family would greatly benefit from a playroom. We're doing everything possible to front-load our girls with the tools they need to be successful adults. The playroom would be an uncluttered space with dimmable lighting, a crash pad corner for both calming down and thrashing around when needed with pillows of different textures, an area for a mini trampoline for sensory movement, a small teepee for private play, and a dollhouse for storytelling and reflection. Therapeutic play is effective in decreasing anxiety and fear, and has been found to significantly improve cognitive and social aspects of development. Therapeutic play is much less structured, it focuses on processing play as a mechanism for mastering self-regulation. A loving family is important, but it is just not enough. So, we're hoping to appeal the 10-foot variance down to 9 feet to allow for ample space for my child's playroom and my mother and her sewing machine and television.
Okay, so you're not, you're not looking for an appeal, you're looking for, actually, you're looking for a nine-inch variance to go forward with this construction?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for this lady? My thoughts are, you know, one of the things I was going to ask you is, say, you don't really even need a variance if you make it nine inches smaller, but under the exceptions that you gave us, the special needs and all of that, and I believe there's nothing really to the rear of your yard, that there's no reason why we shouldn't grant you this variance, so that's how I feel about it. Is there anyone else speaking in favor of this variance? This application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Okay, this hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Discussion? We need a motion? I make a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve, and we have a second on the motion. Mr. Thomas?
I am with the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item number three, 1191, New Haven Avenue, Zone R-125, Thomas Lynch, escarp for Kathy Pitko and Arthur Viola, Sections 2.5, 2.5- Kitko and Arthur Viola, Sections 2.5, .5, very rear lot with to 126 feet where 150 feet required, subject to re-subdivision approval from Planning and Zoning Board per Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-26, for construction of single-family residence, map 30, block 713B, parcel 50.
Mr. Lynch, hold on just one second. Mr. Sota is recusing himself from this hearing, so Mr. Dubois, you will fill in for Mr. Sota. Thank you for your patience in letting us, let a lady go ahead of you.
No, no problem.
And it's all yours.
That was quick. Again, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Thomas Lynch, I'm here now representing Catherine Lutz. Ms. Lutz is here with me tonight. She's the contract purchaser of the property located at 1191 New Haven Avenue here in Milford. And as you all know from last month, she had presented, actually Jeffrey Gordon had presented on her behalf, an appeal of the decision of David Sulcus. You heard the presentation to you that night. I won't go into it, but I think that there was some clashing of the titans going on there in terms of trying to interpret the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations and looking at maps and trying to talk about angles and squares and everything else. And to be perfectly blunt, I spoke to Mr. Sulcus after that hearing. I also spoke to the city attorney, Jonathan Burcham. And you know that there was a large group of neighbors that were here last month speaking in favor of this application. So I think that the, the heart of the matter is that everyone wants to see a single-family lot be developed here. It's legally what was the best route to accomplish that. So instead of getting into arguments and appealing decisions of the city planner, we withdrew that application. I spoke to Attorney Burcham. We filed this application in its stead, and I think it makes much more sense, and I'm going to get into it with you. But this is a piece of property that has been in existence since back in the 1940s. The Milford Lawns subdivision was developed back in, I think, 1945. The other streets in the rear there, Meeting House Lane, Sparabush, Fremont, all of those houses were developed on small quarter-acre lots. And the original owner of the area kept this large parcel because he wanted it for his family. And actually, Marie Yancy, who was the owner's wife, ended up passing on a few years ago. I handled her estate. The owner of the property is now her two children, Kathy Kitko and Arthur Viola, and they're trying to sell the property. So Kathy and her husband have signed a contract to purchase it. They hired Coda Spody to design the map. I think you've all seen the map. It's a very large piece of property. Under Section 255 of our zoning regulations, we're required to have certain elements for a rear lot. You have to have a minimum of an acre. Calculating the acre, you don't include the 25-foot accessway that goes to the rear. But one other element of that regulation calls for the lot to be 150 feet in width. And here's where the argument came up last month, because Jeff Gordon had one way of thinking that the lot should be measured, and Mr. Sulcus had another way of doing it. And if you accept Mr. Sulcus's interpretation and past practices of interpreting the regulations to define lot width, you draw a parallel line to the street at the end of the area where the accessway is, and that comes to 126 feet. So we're before you with an application to vary the lot width to 126 feet. But I'm also strongly looking at the map and urging you to look at the map to show that it's very irregular in shape, and there's areas slightly behind where that parallel line would be drawn, where the width of the lot is 209 feet. Okay? And again, under the regulations, we have to have a minimum of one acre. The, the lot would be almost 1.2 acres, and this is in a R-125 zone, so it's five times the size of a lot required in that zone. So these are all practical ways to look at it. Last month, it was getting into personality clash, and we pulled that application back, refiled this application, and we're claiming to you that there's a hardship that exists here because there is a dichotomy of opinion as to how to measure the width of the lot. So by accepting Mr. Sulcus's argument, we're saying, okay, it's 126 feet. We're asking for the variance of the zoning regulation, not the subdivision regulation as it relates to the planning and zoning board ultimately approving this, but just that one part of Section 255 as it relates to the width of the lot. And if you look at the application that I submitted to you, I actually specifically referenced Section 8-26 of our statutes because that specifically says that the body, the governing body under any municipality that can only subdivide lots is the planning and zoning board. I've been practicing for many years, and I came before this board many times in the past seeking variances of the lot size, the square footage, and making arguments that people had oversized lots in zones, and it was a burden on them to have to maintain an oversized lot in a particular zone. That's not the case here. We have two lots that'll meet all of the square footage requirements of the zoning regulations. And again, that will be step two of this process going to the planning and zoning board for that. Planning and zoning board also has directives to have all plans reviewed by the city departments. So I'm not going to be getting into discussions of drainage or a utility plan or landscaping or anything else because if there are any interested neighbors here tonight that want to know about how this is going to get developed, those answers will be directed to the planning and zoning board when I appear before them along with Jeff Gordon for an application for a re-subdivision of this property. So with all those arguments, and you heard Kathy last month say that she and Richard, they just want to build a nice, single-family, one-level house as they move on, I'd ask that you grant this application. I think it's reasonable, and the hardship does exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lynch?
I, I agree there's a hardship with the land, and, and just to reiterate, so I'm clear, you know, we give you the variance, if you approve the variance, it still doesn't guarantee that it's going to happen.
Correct.
It has to go through the board, and it has to...
It just enables us to bring the application to the planning and zoning board.
Anyone else speaking?
My name is Joel Gorkowski. I live at 15 Kerry Court. That's right behind the property that's...
Can you just pull that microphone a little closer to you, sir? The microphone, can you pull?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And restate your address, please.
My name is Joel Gorkowski. I reside at 15 Kerry Court. This property is directly behind my fence. This is one of the most beautiful properties you ever want to see. I've got many photos here, and if you see these photos, I want you to see them. It's a one-family, single home would fit here so beautiful, it would be everybody's paradise. Please take a look at these photos. And if the woman needs more property, I'm sure between the neighbors that we have, and we have a good community, and I don't even know the people's first name, I'll be more than happy to accommodate and try to give them a piece of my property. It sits back well over, probably 100 feet, and it's, it's simply protected. I lived there, and I come from Brooklyn, living on a third floor office, where I heard every neighbor's conversation with all the, "This is paradise. This is the American dream." When I came to Connecticut, the first sign I see when I go off 839, it's a north, small city with a big heart. This is it.
Okay, thank you.
This is it. Let's give it to them.
Thank you, sir.
I'll just want to keep these photos.
We don't have to, if you'd like to keep them yourself.
A couple of them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Secretary, Mr. Harris. My name is Scott Barnett. I live at 1202 New Haven Avenue, property directly across the street. I've known the Lutz's for over 25 years, and I would tell you that it'd be welcome to have them in the neighborhood. And what I see as the described use of the property looks to be the first best use of the property, and we would welcome them to the neighborhood. I think that the plans they have for this and are very appropriate, and I stand in support of the variance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Joe McGary. I live at 55 Village Road in Milford, lifelong resident of Milford, and I want to speak in favor of the proposed variance on this property. A single-family home would go good. They're all single-family homes. The property's big, it's level, won't be any hardship for anybody, and it would be a very responsible, long-term use of the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alex Pazak. I live at 1181 New Haven Avenue. It's adjacent to 1191, and I just want to say I have no problem with a home being built there. I think it'll be fine, and it's what it should be used for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone here opposed?
Just for the record, I promised Jay Barone, who is a good friend of mine, that I would submit the email that he sent. He sent me an email at 4:40 this afternoon saying, "Hi, Tom, I wanted to get this email over to you before tonight's meeting in front of the P&amp;Z Board." Of course, it's the ZBA, but I'm hoping that you will have the opportunity to restate my position regarding the application for a variance for 1191 New Haven Avenue, Kathy Lutz being the applicant. My position remains the same from the previous hearing in July. I am in favor of the single-family home proposed by the Lutz family, Jay Barone, 274 Chapel Street in Milford.
Thank you. Anyone in opposition to this application? Okay, you're all set, Mr. Lynch?
I am.
Any questions for Mr. Lynch? No? Okay, this hearing's closed. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Haberman.
I think there's definitely hardship with the property, and I think it's, you know, it should, give the, give the variance for it.
Second?
I think it has the hardship. I think it has the support of the neighborhood, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Reason for the approval is the hardship of the irregular shape of the lot and follow all the information accompanying with the survey.
We have a motion to approve this variance. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Thomas?
I am with the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
I'm with the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved.
Hello. Good evening.
Hold on. Just wait one minute. We have, we have to read you.
We need to take a technical... Oh, I'm sorry.
We're going to be taking just a few-minute recess, and then you may come forward after he reads your application. Okay?
Thanks.
You're, you're up next. Okay, we're ready to resume? Okay?
Item number, uh, four, thank you, sorry. Item number four, 691 East Broadway, Zone R-5, Dan Orth, agent for Pam Chung Kim and Victor Ning, Section 4-1-4, very north deck projection to 4.11 where eight feet permitted, AC platform to 1.11 where eight feet permitted, map 22, block 474, parcel 7.
Hi, good evening, Chairman and the board members. My name is Po Chun Kim, and I'm the owner of 691 East. What I'm trying to do tonight is to ask for your approval to, I think you have copies of the plan. Basically, is to extend the walkway from the approved landing on the, I guess if it's on the, from the street view, it would be on the left side of the house, from the stairs up to the approved landing to connect to the approved deck that's in the front where it faces the water. Currently, the approved landing is where the approved deck goes up to the front door, but then it just kind of ends there, and we do not have an access to the front deck. So this will allow the access to the front deck without having to go through the house each time that it has to go to the deck or the, the water side. And we are kind of asking that variance based on the Section 4.14 that we're varying just the deck to four feet 11 where eight feet is permitted, and then with a little jog out just for the AC, the air conditioning platform, to be put there. And so it will be to one foot 11 inches where eight feet is permitted. So that particular jog is purely for situating the air conditioning there.
How wide is that space where the air conditioners are going to be, the, the extra little jet out?
The extra jet out is three feet.
Yeah. It's three feet out, but how long is it?
10.
10?
Yes.
You need 10 feet for the air conditioners?
Yeah. It's right on the plan, the three feet and 10.
Do you need 10 feet? You need 10 feet for the air conditioners?
Well, I mean, the air conditioning...
Because you're saying it's just going to be for the air conditioners, but we don't need 10 feet for the air. I mean, you know, we're looking at overall, I know we had, probably had this variance before with you.
Yes.
And it was denied. So actually, the only thing that's really in question with me right now is, is the length of where the air conditioners are going to be.
Yeah, the air conditioning, you know, you might not need the whole 10 feet, but I think it just allows room for it to have the, also the ventilation and for somebody to service it, you know, it should be able to go in. So, I mean, that jogged out is just for that purpose. It's not really for anything else.
Okay, but it is an open deck, so I, I mean, the circulation is going to be there. So that's just, just my thought. Any questions for this, for this lady? Go ahead, Mr. Sota.
Well, I, first of all, I agree with Joe on this. The, the 10-foot is ridiculous for an air conditioner. I mean, a four-foot platform's all you need for, for those. The circulation sucks in the sides and blows out the top, so the rails aren't going to affect that at all. How wide is that stair, that walkway all the way to the back?
How wide is this here?
Yes.
I think that's about four feet.
Okay. Well, what we've been approving is we've been approving 42 inches. 36 inches is code, and we give you another six inches for the four-by-four and the top rail and everything, so you have, you'll have a clear area of 36 inches. That, that's what we've been giving everybody else. What is the flood height over there? Where's your flood height?
I'm sorry?
The flood height. What's the flight, the flood elevation?
Do you know?
Okay, and what's, what's the elevation of the deck? So you only, okay, so it had the, the deck is at 14.5?
You know, you know what? Maybe you can come up and give us a few things, please.
He's so technical.
Okay. Please identify yourself and give us the information we need.
I'm Dan Orth, the builder for...
Dan Orth, the builder for Victor and Kim, for 691 East Broadway.
Go ahead, Mr. Sota.
So what was the flood elevation of the deck?
I believe the flood elevation is 13.
13. What's the elevation of the deck?
It's 13 for the flood elevation, and the deck's like 14.6.
Okay. So what I'm getting at is the AC has to go on the deck?
Right.
Okay, can't. I was thinking it could go below it, but the flood height's up. It's got to be above flood.
Yes.
So, okay. You're the builder?
Yes.
What do you need for that air conditioning? It's not 10 feet. Come on, you know that, and I know that.
Yeah. I mean, we want room for the guy, the service guy, to get in there and...
What's that?
We did want room for the serviceman to get in there and move.
You're going to have the whole walkway to service it, and you put your connections on that side, so...
Yep.
There's only one side, there's only service on the one side where the connections are. The rest is just coy.
Right. And the proposed landing, I mean, I'm sorry, the approved landing and stairs were approved for four foot wide, so we're just continuing that four foot to the back just to keep everything in line and keeping the same without any jogs.
Well, as I was telling your client, we've been approving 42 inches. The 48 is kind of excessive. You need 36, and that gives you another six inches for your rails and your posts and all that.
Right.
Okay, because some guys have been coming in with five-foot walkways, so we're trying to keep everything consistent.
Yeah, we're just trying to keep the look of the whole walkway the same that was approved.
Did you build the walkway already?
Yes.
Okay.
The approved part, we approved. I mean, the approved part, we built.
Okay. I would like to say something, too. Just be reminded that we also took a plan and to look at the last month, our neighbor, the proposed 687. It was approved for a continuous walkway that's as wide as four feet, six inches.
No, we gave them 42 inches on that.
So the plan...
We didn't approve what they had. We modified that.
So it's approved only for 42?
Three foot, six is what we approved. We changed that measurement.
Okay, so I guess they didn't file the amended plan yet, right?
Did they build the deck already?
No, no. So, okay.
I believe that's the plan that they came with, and we redirected them. If you check the minutes, you can see that that was not what we approved. What they drew is not what we approved.
We approved the 42-inch walkway. We're trying to stay at 42 inches to give maximum space between the houses. We're trying to be consistent with everybody in the neighborhood.
We approved it last month with conditions, and the conditions were, just as these gentlemen had stated.
Okay.
It wasn't four foot, it was 42 inches. So we're looking, we are looking to accommodate you, you know, within reason here, so that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. No, we weren't aware of the conditions, so if 42 inches, I think it's fine, too, because I think the intent is really to keep it within the approved that was earlier done at four feet, but if you need to be consistent with the rest of the approvals, that's fine.
Okay, so what we have to determine is the air conditioning platform. It's, right now, you have three foot out by 10 foot.
Right.
So what are you putting out there? You're actually, are you putting just a air conditioning condenser there? It's one unit, so how big is the one unit?
How many tons are you putting in?
I'd say it's four or five ton.
Four or five tons?
I can't remember what the DC guy had told me.
How many square foot's the house?
It's almost 2,200 square feet.
2,200? Probably putting three tons in.
Why that?
Okay.
Maximum, Joe, on that would be four foot by four foot for that condenser, and that would give you room around it. I mean, the bases you put on the ground come 36 by 36, and the majority of them, up to three tons fit on those.
Can we just do five foot? Because then, you know, enough for all the poles and stuff, so that you don't have to squeeze it in.
I think, I'd feel more comfortable if typically they do 36 by 36. I think four is sufficient. Four feet is sufficient.
I think if you bump that out, three foot out by four foot wide, you have plenty of room even, and you're going to be servicing it from the walkway, so you have plenty of room there.
Okay, so anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any questions? Any other further questions? Because it sounds like we're ready to make a motion with conditions. Okay?
Okay, this hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Okay, it's your pleasure. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion with conditions and make a motion to approve the walkway from the existing approved walkway to the back of the, to the water side of the deck, 42 inches with a three foot by four foot jut out for the AC unit.
Second. We have a motion to approve with conditions. We have a second on the motion? Mr. Thomas?
I'm with the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It passes. With exception.
Item numbers five. 860 West River Street, Zone R10, Natalie Sherbaum, owner, Section 3-1-4-1, subsection 3, vary to permit keeping of poultry in DO 25 Zone, map 6, block 8, block B83, plot 3A.
Good evening, Chairperson, Board Members. My name is Brian Sherbaum. This is my wife, Natalie Sherbaum. We live on 860 West River Street, and we're asking for a variance to 3.1.34, to have a chicken coop in the DO 25 zoning area. We live in a residential area that is, for some reason, zoned as office space. We live on two acres with plenty of land to have the chicken coop, and we're asking for a variance to the zoning.
Okay, yeah, that was one of my questions, too, is residential. The zoning change, is there any zoning change considered for that area? Light industrial, is it?
There is peculiar zoning in this area. It bounces back and forth between RA and DO 25. The DO 25 zone was created, I'm not sure exactly when, but a long time ago, and there has been some discussion in the office and with neighbors about possibly amending the zone.
Okay, thank you. How many chickens do you plan on having?
Six.
Six. Rooster?
No.
No. Okay, we don't see a lot of people here in opposition. Usually, we've had hearings like this before, and that was the concern being, if you had a rooster, then, you know, you'd have the noise, and so we don't see any opposition here. Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? Any questions, gentlemen? There are no ladies here this evening. It's gentlemen. Questions? None? Okay, this hearing's closed. Okay, we'll have a decision for you shortly. Hold on. I already closed it.
It's okay to close. I just want to read something. Joe, I have a question for Mr. Harris. Steven, what's the limit on chickens? Is it six?
It depends on the zone. Hang on a second.
And also, is that zone, wouldn't that zone have been changed when they constructed the house? Because the house didn't look that old.
I drove by today. The house does not look that old. The problem with this applicant is that poultry is only allowed in residential zones, and this is, her house is in a design office zone. So what you could do, I mean, her neighbor is in the RA zone. There's a patchwork of DO 25 and RA-zoned houses here, which is the peculiarity I was talking about.
My question is...
But in keeping, in keeping with the overall feel of the neighborhood and what other houses are zoned, they can have 10 hens in an RA zone, and their names, some of their neighbors are in the RA zone, so if they wanted to, and if the board was disposed to approve this application, they could have as many as 10 hens if they wanted.
Mr. Harris, do we have to put a condition in to ensure that roosters do not go in there, or how does that work exactly, sir?
You can put any condition that relates to the regulations in this. So by default, if this was a regular RA zone, these homeowners would have come in for an administrative approval, and they would have been on their way. But because of the odd zoning in the area, they have to ask for this, what amounts to a use variance, to permit chickens in an office zone, where if their neighbor came in, their neighbor would have it by right.
Right. So are roosters permitted in an RA zone?
Roosters are not permitted in any zone.
That's where we're going. Okay.
No roosters. Hens only.
Okay, so then we don't need to put that condition in because it's prohibited?
Except, this is a use variance, so you should condition it.
Huh.
Because this is not a residential zone. The use is not allowed in the zone.
Thank you.
They are asking for a use that's not allowed to be in the zone, so you can propose a condition of no more than 10 hens, no roosters.
Something felt that I needed to ask you that question. That's good. Thank you.
Okay, we have our knowledge now, so now we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with conditions that there can be no more than 10 chickens, hens, with no rooster.
Second. A motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Thomas?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six. 1080 Bridgeport Avenue, CDD 3, Teresa Britton, agent for Altima LLC, owner, section 5-4-2-3, no, 5-4-2-1, vary to permit lot size of 20,147, where 22,000 required for auto repair and used car sales, map 43, block 488, parcel 10A.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members. Mr. Harris, my name is Attorney Wynn Smith. Offices here on the Green in Milford. I represent the applicant and owner, Altima LLC. On this application brought by the managing member of that LLC, Teresa Britton, who's here with me tonight. This is the old Wayne Tire parcel, and historically, Wayne Tire had operated there for years and years, and when he closed up, the owner then, which was the predecessor owner here, which was a trust for the Wiznuski children, had not been able to get anybody in there. Unbeknownst, I think to anybody, there is some discussion with the zoning office, and they were concerned that perhaps the prior existing non-conformity here would not be allowed if a similar type of use was to be brought in there, auto services, tire shop, something like that. And the discussions with the office indicated that if they were going to try to go in that, in that direction, to get a similar type of use that was historically there, that they should come before the board and ask for this variance that you see before you on the lot size. And I note for you that it's about 95% or so, so it isn't a great variance as being requested. The inequity here would just be that historically, that was allowed, and they're simply asking for that earlier usage to be allowed still, and to get a variance to allow that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Haberman.
Yeah, the use is just going to be for car repairs? Is it all car repairs? Is it minor car repairs? Is it primarily going to be car sales, or is it...
I think the idea would be primarily car sales. I think if they could get Jim Wayne to come back in, they'd ask him to reopen the old shop of the tire services, but that's not in the cards. I think he's happy where he is now. And I think they're thinking perhaps, the auto services that's allowed in the district, I think they're thinking maybe car sales.
And so no gasoline or anything like that?
Good heavens, no. No gasoline.
Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any more questions? Any questions, gentlemen? No? This hearing's closed. As stated, I don't think it's really that much undersized, and that's right on the corner. As far as the number of cars, I don't think we'd have to limit the number of cars or anything like that, because they're contained to that corner, and they're only blocking themselves, so I don't have a problem at all with this application in approving it. Any other things?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hardship is the shape of the lot, and it's a good use for that. It's a previous use, so it's a good use for that particular plot of land.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Thomas?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved. You got them all? Yes, we do. Do we have any new business this evening? Any new business? No? Any staff updates? Why do we have staff updates on this? Do you have any idea?
We don't have any new staff, so we have no staff updates.
How about acceptance of the minutes for July 12 hearing? You've read the minutes, through all...
I read them. I would accept them, Mr. Chairman.
Everything's in order? Okay. Applications for September 13? No?
Meg's looking quizzical, so I don't think we have any.
Really? Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.